All the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approval of the agenda. Is there any changes or none, council? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as it's presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, February 15th, 2017, regular meeting. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification?
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion from Dave to approve the minutes of the February 15th, 2017, regular meeting.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? State your name and address and...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeff Quistorf, I live on 1216 Park Lane, Sock Center. Just got a few, just basically one topic that I really want to talk about, and it's the roads down by the splash pad around my house there on 1216. They're getting in rough shape, and I don't know if you guys have any overlay or something going on somewhere, but I'd like to see something soon. Even in Sock Center here, streets haven't been done for a while, except for the new projects, but I'd like to see some new overlay on some streets around town before it gets too late. Thank you.
All right, thank you. One of the things is, we do set aside $100,000 a year for mill and overlay in town, and we do different areas. Last year was out by State Road and by the high school. Obviously, it's one of them things that we've been looking at, because $100,000 isn't getting us very far in a mill and overlay project anymore. So, and that area is on target for it, but it's not right of way. But it can be re-looked at as far as, I know Willow Street is really rough, and going around that curve by the splash pad is just as bad, so. It is something we look at on a yearly basis, and even have a five-year plan on mill and overlay, so it's just right now for coming up with the money to do larger projects. So, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Anyone else like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is closed. We have no public hearings. Takes us to our reports and presentations. CVB report, Pam Boardman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. 216 has been quite the transition year for the CVB. Ann Carlin left in end of July, and I took over in August. Quite the learning curve, I can tell you, but things have seemed to go along fairly well, and has done a terrific job as far as setting things up and getting me started in a very good way. You got my report, and I guess if you've looked at it, I guess I would entertain questions if there was any questions on the report itself.
Any questions from council? I know we just received it tonight, so it's a lot of information quickly. Looks like the 3% tax on the hotels since 2011 till 2016 has been on a steady increase, so that means there's more people using the hotels than coming to Sock Center than there used to be.
Right. Couple of things that have, that have, are changing in this field, and one of them with the income, last year we had the windmill project, and so I'm not sure how much of that income was generated by the windmill, people that stayed in town at our hotels and that type of thing. So I think that's a, that might be a little high as far as what we're gaining each year, but I set our budget a little less than that, because I felt that I wanted to be safe versus putting that figure in for a budget as guaranteed on, so I left that a little lower. The, one of the things that's changing quite a bit is, I attended the annual EMT, our Explore Minnesota Tourism Conference, and people now in this day and age, in the millennial age, are not buying houses and not settling down to have money to travel. And they're not just traveling to destinations, they're traveling to experiences. So the, the job for us in this field is to work with our vendors to try to create experiences versus just I'm gonna go and watch something being made, I want to be a part of what's being made and to be able to take something home with me. So, and looking at the vendors that we use, which is Red-Headed Creamery and Vintage Village Antiques, I'll be working with those people to try to create some kind of experiences, whether it's help making butter or whatever, and I can take cheese home and that type of thing. So that is a big shift in what we're seeing. And people aren't taking like one vacation a year, people are taking three and four vacations a year. And because of how work has changed for people, where they're working, either a lot of them out of their homes or have varied schedules, they're saving their money to do those kinds of experiences. So we're seeing a lot of that in the industry, which makes us aware of where we have to put our advertising and what work we have to do in order to get people to come, especially to Sock Center. We will be putting money away every year for a project that we'd like to do in five years, and according to the Explore Minnesota people, that is very okay to do. At one point, you needed to spend all your money within the year on advertising, and 50 miles out of the area you were in, now it's more, yes, those advertising dollars, but if you have an event that you want to create in five years, you can put money in savings for that event. So I think that's what we're planning on doing.
Questions?
I just had, I just had one. I've, I still have quite a few friends up in the Fargo-Moorhead area. Yes, I do have friends. But I hear a lot of comments about the sign leaving Moorhead, Sock Center, and it's really neat. I only make it up there a couple times a year. Does that ever get changed to the sign? Is it the same one, or is it different?
It was the same one for as long as we rented those billboards. We have stopped using those billboards, and they still might be up, because they might have not, not have found somebody to rent them.
Found someone to replace it.
But they're very difficult to track as far as how much actual business we were getting from those, and they were like almost $1,200 a month.
Yep.
So we felt as the board that what we were putting into that, we couldn't really measure that type of, what we were getting out of it.
I understand.
Yeah, we're probably better off in advertising in the Explore Minnesota magazines and those kinds of additions, because people are going there to do that.
Yep. As of two weeks ago, it was still up, I saw it.
Oh, well, free advertising. Okay.
Anyone else have anything else? All right, thanks Pam.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Pam.
EDA report, Vicki?
So the EDA met in regular session this afternoon. They received the counter offer on the interpretive center, and they have a recommendation, and you'll be going into closed session at the end of tonight's meeting to look at that, as well as a counter offer on the racetrack property, and they'll have that recommendation as well. And so that, those will be the two items that you'll go into closed, closed session on. They did get, receive an update on the Kate's Estates project. I did update the EDA, because that is kind of their project because of the apartment complex. And also, they did receive a request for the railroad property for a development. So they'll be meeting with, hopefully that person at the next EDA meeting. So those are the four items on the EDA. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, thank you. Move on to action items. Approve Resolution 2017-13, approving plans and authorize bid.
Keith will be up here to show you the plans, you guys had authorized him to go ahead and prepare the plans, and one of the things had to do with that stub that comes off of like the base of Kate's Estates Drive. And he had two alternatives for that, which I put in your packet, and the cost for those. I did talk to the owner of the golf course, and he is recommending against option two, that you can look at those numbers and look at the maps, et cetera, on that. The bid opening has been set for March 23rd, expectation to award the bid on April 5th, but I'm gonna have Keith kind of show you that option and anything else that might have changed.
Okay, thank you, Mickey. Vicki?
Come back, oops, have to wake it up. Gosh.
Fell asleep on me here.
I hate my job.
Obviously, they can't spell.
There we go. Okay, now we're back. So I just wanted to go through and this, a couple things on the plans. You've seen this, several of these sheets are in your packets. This is for the Kate's Estates improvements. Wanted to show you just the, the street section that's in there. It is our standard, you know, our standard, I can't hold this and do two things at the same time here. It's our standard 18-foot or 36-foot back-to-back streets. There we go. So it is our standard 18-foot, so it's 36 feet face-to-face. One thing I want to show you is, this is currently showing B6-18 curb. One of the things that came up fairly recently, Matt Zaniola was talking about, he'd really like to see a surmountable curb instead. It's a little more rounded, those, for those of you just around Lakewood Drive in the Lakewood addition, that's surmountable curb, and he would like to match that same type of curb. He feels that's better for driveway approaches, and does feel that's okay for him for snowplowing. Typically, we hear a little bit of difference, they don't usually like surmountable as much, because the snowplow blade can ride up and over and get the, get the edge of the sod, so it's a little bit strange. Normally, we hear the other thing around, but, but that is what he would like. I'm gonna show you that, just so you can kind of see what it looks like. It's actually this top one. You can kind of get a sense, I'm trying to get for the camera, that it's fairly gentle for that curb. So that's what it looks like. It's a four, four inch, a little over four inch in that back, so normally it's a six inch for a B6-18, so it's a little, a little bit lower, a little bit of an easier bump, if you will, coming off of the curb. So that's what he's recommending for that. I didn't currently add that to the final plans, because I wanted to just see if there was any concerns with the council at this stage. If there wasn't, we would make that change and add that different type of curb in there. So that's one thing I'd like you to think about. And then the other is just go through this, these stubs. As we talked last time, there are, these are the stubs, so north is to the, to the left here, and going west is straight down. This is Main Street at the bottom here, Lakewood, Lake Shore Drive, I should say, through here. These are the stubs, sewer and water. What's currently shown is to the east right of way of Main Street. After some staff discussion, if we were gonna extend this, we, they wanted to extend it to the other side of the road, so all the way to that west, excuse me, yes, west right of way of Main Street. And the, and the numbers that you have in the council packet, it's $9,300 to run it to this right of way and stop here, and it's the 32/6 to run it down all the way to here. The reason, the thinking that got me to here is that it's already and available for any sort of development potential that would happen in this property. We wouldn't have to come across the road again. It would be out of the way for development that might occur in through here. Those will be lots, city lots, it will be for sale for, for somebody. We're anticipating potentially like a townhome or twin home type of things could be in that area. So, so that's one direction we're looking for. As Vicki said, they did talk to this developer, this current owner of this, they did not want to pay for those additional costs to extend it from here to this other side. So that's the information that we have at this point in time. I think that's about all that's of real relevance in the plans I wanted to show you. This just shows the street, so it's not all that exciting. So that's really all I have that I wanted to show you, and wanted to get your input on both the curb and then the discussion about the stub as to how you want that final, and then we'll be asking for it to approve those plans subject to those changes and authorize us advertisement for bids. As Vicki said, that would be set for March 23rd, it's a Thursday.
Don't blow that, Keith. Is that the, what is that?
Uh, which?
The, don't blow it.
Down here?
Yeah. Is that the regular curb?
That's actually a different type of curb that looks like that.
Oh, okay.
Oops, I can't, can't go slow enough here. So this, this is another type of surmountable curb. You can notice it takes out the, the curves, so it's a little more abrupt. Some don't like this, it's just a little more of a, of a bounce. The nice thing about this one is you can feel it a little bit more, I think, from, from plowing perspective. The other one's a little easier to ride up over, but the other one definitely has a nicer driveway. You just don't have any issues with going up and over. Plus, any driveway that might be put in, that curb will fit just fine. You really don't have to even put in a, take out the curb and put in a driveway approach. They can just put, put their asphalt or their concrete, depending what kind of driveway, right up to it. So it's, it becomes nice, you don't have to know where driveways are located in the future. They can just hook up to it, if you will. They can do the same with this, but once again, we found a little more opposition to that kind. It's a little bit more abrupt. So in a B6, obviously, you have to take out for driveways, because you can't drive over the B6 curb, so.
You probably would have more, you'd probably be more apt to gouge lawns using a surmountable as opposed to...
Typically, that's what we hear. Matt was pretty clear that he felt it wouldn't be an issue, had some experience with that in other areas, so he, he is, he is recommending, he would like to do the surmountable curb to match what's on Lake Shore Drive, which would be that, that upper one that's currently not on the, on the screen there. So that more rounded one, that's what he would like to see.
And that road that goes in from the north is where you want that curb?
The whole cul-de-sac would be that curb.
That whole cul-de-sac.
The whole street, yep. And it would match Lake Shore Drive.
All right. What's council's feelings? I, I feel that we should stay with the standard curb.
I kind of do too. Just given, you know, if you get a real, real event, or a lot of snow event, finding that curb is probably important.
Well, yeah. One of the things that I'm concerned about is, and we know it's not supposed to happen, but it does, people put in sprinkler systems and they put it right up against the curb. Well, if we go with that style that Matt wants to, it's gonna be real easy for a snowplow to slide up over the top and take sprinkler heads off, and then even though they're not supposed to be there, it's an unnecessary expense for the property owner. And even with a normal curb, even out in my area, I know, you know, when they're winging it back, they're peeling the sod back two feet on that type of a curb, I can imagine what it's gonna be like if you have a surmountable curb around there. Plus, it's a lot easier for someone to drive off of it at any point in time and not actually abide by driveways.
Yeah, well, I know that...
You could drive across someone's yard if they don't have...
People will drive, yeah, people will drive out of the street.
Right.
Because they don't feel a curb.
Right.
They just go right over it.
What, what happens if we have a tremendous rainstorm? I mean, you're gonna flood lawns and everything else. You know, I agree with you, Mayor.
You can, in one like this, obviously, it's only a little over four inches in the back, so in a big rainstorm, that water will spill over, you know, and into the yards a little bit on that side, so it, it does prevent some of that. I mean, we don't typically get two bigger ones like that, but, but that can happen. Unfortunately, Matt's not here to give you his direct input. All I can suggest is that's what he wanted to see and was recommending to me, so.
But the only thing, the only reason to do that is, well, you can avoid a curb cut when they put in a driveway, which is, seems like a lot of effort.
He likes that drive over, he likes to be able, that drive over approach, and thinks it's a smoother for the driveways, so. Now, when it's a B6, they have to pull it out and do a, a driveway apron anyway, and we do, and for the apartment that's already there, we do have a driveway plan for the project. So there is a driveway apron for that particular one, so.
One of the other things that I'm thinking of also is with the normal curb, you know, we've got a ordinance based on how wide your driveway can be.
Yep.
If they don't have to take out a curb and they can pour it, they could pour that thing as wide as their total front yard, and we don't have any control, because they don't have to punch out any existing curb.
They can drive out anywhere.
Yeah, they can drive out anywhere. So I think it's gonna just create more problems for planning, and then the permit issue by going with that type of curb.
That's a fair point.
It's a, it's a council's decision on that, but you know...
I agree, I think regular curb.
Yep.
I would say general consensus, I think everyone's go with the normal.
We'll leave it as it, as it the B6 then.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. And then the other thing is, where do we want to end the water and, water and sewer?
Water and sewer stubs, yep.
Water and sewer, do we want to just go to the west edge of Kate's Estate Drive right of way, or do we extend it all the way to the west side of Main, Main Street, which we cross the road?
Yeah, I mean, again, normally we put these in the road.
Normally we put these...
On the other side, we're not gonna be in the road anymore.
We normally would put these in the road as we go, but this one, remember, is meant to go across and go into that property. So it's not, it's gonna be in a, a different road, if you will, once it gets on the other side.
All right, on the road on the other side.
Now, there will be, the stub to the south that comes around the Indian mound, that eventually could be in the road, that kind of depends on what happens next in that particular area. We've talked about that before.
Yeah, 'cause that one's stopping at the, at the road.
Yeah, that was, that one's stopping at the right of way, and subject to something else happening, and whether we do the road at that point in time, then we would want to put it out in the road as we typically would.
Okay, but, but again, we don't actually have a plan of what's going in there. This is again, just a theory that there'll be a road on the other side.
Not for anything at this point. So it's really kind of a function of, we want to sell those lots, we are getting easement through there, so that can be done later, you know, will be potentially adjacent to somebody's home that going through there, or when it's been dug up, but, you know, but it might not get built on for a while, and those stubs could get put in before anything is built there, so it's a, you know, chicken in the egg thing, if you will.
Did I, did I hear you say we have an objection about the assessments anyway?
We do, they, they do not. I mean, so at this point, they would either, you could try to assess them, and they could contest, and we've been through that process before. You could hold those dollars and, and assess it to a property in the future, or you could just not do it now and wait and do it in the future. Those kind of are your really, your three options.
Seems a lot easier to just not do it now, and when the project goes through, it'll be part of that project.
And I, you know, I, to me, it's, if we're gonna do it on one end with water and sewer to the road right of way, do it the same way on the other end, and not worry about crossing the road with...
So just go to the east right of way?
Yep.
So that would be another option, I guess, if you went that far.
Just go to that and...
But once again, there's a cost, and do we try to assess that? Do we just hold that and keep those dollars for somebody in the future?
Yeah, could that be a detriment to future?
Well, we're gonna go to the west edge of Kate's Estates.
Yeah, so it's the $9,300 cost.
It's the $9,300 cost.
93 would be to the west right of way, the west right of way of Kate's Estates Drive, yes.
Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about.
Okay, okay, that's, I was thinking maybe you meant the east right of way of Main Street.
Oh.
But not that far.
The west edge of there.
But that is an idea, though.
Kate's Drive, yes.
But like you said, that would, that's an assess, we'd like to assess that, rather than...
You'd probably end up with maybe, I'm guessing, 15-ish, there about 1,000 to get to say the east right of way of Main Street?
Some in the middle, yeah, but I mean, again, there's no reason to do that either.
Right.
We might as well just stop at the edge of the...
Other, other than getting out of the, the project, if you will, that would be about the only reason you might consider doing that is just to get out of the way, if you will. But other than that, I can't, I can't really come up with another reason to do it other than that.
Yeah. Actually, yeah, just going to that west edge of Kate's Drive, to me, would make more sense basically, because if we do have to extend it across when there is an actual plan there, then those costs of going for that extra distance to hook up and take it to where it needs to be will be all part of the next project, and will all be assessable costs.
And we will have an easement for it. So it's currently our property, we're gonna grant ourselves an easement to do that.
We have an easement anyways, right.
Soon we got the easement, so.
Sounds good.
As of right now, it's silly to spend money that we're not, you know, we have no reason to spend.
Yep, I agree.
So...
Does it sound like general consensus? Is that how you want to do it?
$9,300?
Yep.
Okay, well, we still gotta make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-13, approving plans and specs and authorizing advertisement for bid for Kate's Estate Drive project. One, we will run the water and sewer to the west edge of Kate's Estate Drive right of way, and what was the other? And we will go with the normal 6-inch curb.
The B6-18.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Diane for that. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dave. Everyone understand the motion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against.
Thank you.
Approve Resolution 2017-14, approving rent for Centra Care.
So, as you know, that our lease with Centra Care for use of the hospital property is tied to the bond payment, but from time to time, there's other costs that they, that are gonna be incurred by the city, and then so then Centra Care would pay us additional rent. And so that has come up again, and we'll have approximately $45,000 over the next nine months of costs that will be related, this is related to, in the past, we had, if you recall, the Medicaid, Medicare, federal and state dollars, and then we've done that in the past, and so this is just a smaller, a smaller version of that. So is that, that, because of those extra costs we're gonna have to incur, that we should set a rental fee for collection on a monthly basis over that period of time. So in, and I am recommending that we do for nine months, $5,100 a month to Centra Care Hospital and Nursing Home, and I do have that put forth in a resolution, 2017-14.
Questions?
No.
Comments? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2017-14, amending rent for Centra Care Hospital and Nursing Home?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Heidi. Any questions, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries four in favor, none against, one abstention. Unfinished business, policy on library room rental.
Yeah, these items are just kind of things that have been on the agenda that we need to take care of. The policy committee, we're provided with a draft room rental agreement for the library, and we should, we're gonna be getting a final policy hopefully at the next council meeting. I'll try to get the committee together between now and then, so we'll have a final policy, and that's the last piece that we have to get together for our agreement with great library system. get together for our agreement with the library system. There's no action required. It's just information only.
Okay. Comp plan update?
Uh, the comp plan, uh, is underway. You know, currently, most of the work is the data gathering stage. And we've been working to provide information to SRF. You can see the list of all the different things that they have requested that we provide to them. And then after they get all that data put together, then our task force meeting is scheduled for, uh, Wednesday, I believe, the 22nd of March.
March 22nd.
March 22nd. So, that's when the first task force meeting. It'll be kind of our little kickoff, just to kind of start figuring out, you know, how we're gonna proceed with this. And then at that point, then they'll know what additional data they're gonna need to collect and where we can obtain that data. So, it's an ongoing process.
Getty Street timeline?
Getty Street. I put that in there because, uh, we were talking about, we had the public hearing and we had six months. And then with this offer on the interpretive center, how that would impact it. So, I just let you know that, uh, the public hearing was actually November 2nd. That means we have to take action by May 2nd in order to not have another public hearing. So, um, we could, you know, prior to that date, award the, or approve the project for either a 17 or an 18 project. So, um, we'll talk about the Getty Street project timeline probably a little bit when we are, how it impacts the offer on the real estate purchase. So, just information for you, May 2nd is our drop dead date on that.
Okay. BDPI Racetrack Road Project Grant.
So, the BDPI grant for the racetrack, we recall that that was at, for the improvements to put the road and the utilities down to the city parcel. Um, it, what happened was some of the people that were awarded the grant weren't able to accept it. So, we've rolled back around and it looks like maybe the recipient of $275,000, which means we would come up with another $400,000. And so, this, of course, may have impact on the offer for that purchase that we're gonna be talking about. But we'll need to be letting, uh, BDPI know shortly whether we're still in the running or not. So, if we decide that, you know what, we're just not gonna do it, we need to let them know because there's other cities that are waiting. Because that also, that means we would be putting forth another $400,000 as well. So, that, that's the impact of that.
Okay. Any questions so far on those four items? Phone system?
Uh, the phone system, we've gone through staff and a consultant looking at the different phone system proposals. And then we're, we're gonna be scheduling an operations committee hopefully next week that we can review them and come back for a, um, recommendation to the city council at the next meeting. So, operations committee, I don't think we got a hold, Wendy get a hold of you yet? I don't think so, to get something set up for next week to go over those.
And campground attendant position?
Appli, interviews are next week for that as well. It's gonna be a busy week next week.
Yes.
So, hopefully, we'll have an, and recommendation on May 15th. Maybe not because sometimes backgrounds and stuff take time.
Okay. Um, that takes us to new business, which we have none. Um, consent agenda, list of checks, unpaid claims of $92,332.84 for the same total. And we have a gambling application for exempt permit request from SOCC Center Chamber of Commerce for a raffle on July 14th, 2017 at Central Lewis Park. Um, any questions about the consent calendar? I have one, and I forgot to talk to you about it before. Uh, on, uh, schedule of claims, uh, emergency service pole for the Siren.
Mm-hmm.
Is that more than just the pole? The poles themselves don't cost $881.
That, that is a 50-foot pole and it's also the delivery.
Okay. All right. That was the only question I had. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Keith. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Heidi. Now, takes us into our informational items.
Oh, you gotta call them.
Oh.
Forgot it.
Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Proves I'm human. Informational items. Hazardous cleanup day.
Uh, the informational items, there's three of them there. The one is the Hazard Waste Collection Day. You'd ask that I keep that rolling on the agenda to remind people June 14th at the arena parking lot. Also, the recycling day, which is appliances, metal, that type of thing. That's May 12th and 13th at the arena parking lot.
Vicki, oh, Sarah?
Hi, sorry, I have a change on that date. Are you doing recycling and I'll do recycling only while I'm doing it on Saturday.
Just, that's the 13th?
Yeah, the 13th.
Okay.
Okay. The recycling day is on May 13th.
May 13th. Right.
Okay.
Okay. And then, uh, we have the loss control workshops. Of course, staff and board members both can attend. And you see the agenda there if there's anything that you find interesting.
Do we have any questions on any of the informational items?
I was just wondering, will we be able to bring, um, okay.
We, we, we stopped you with this.
Yeah.
Any RV refrigerators?
Yeah.
Okay. We are now going to recess this regular session and go into closed session. So, thank you, everyone, for coming. We'll reconvene our regular council meeting after being in closed session. The council has, uh, discussed two items. We've given staff, um, update, direction to proceed with the counteroffer on the interpretive center property and also on the grant for the racetrack property. So, is there any other? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion by Heidi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five in favor, none against. Needing adjourn.
Great.